Something is wrong with the process. And then you don't even come to tell us.
Manatee has a few there because...
Because if you're hiding it from us, that doesn't work in a way.
You've made those decisions and you don't come to tell us. Good.
How do you ever know?
Sometimes they switch it.
I'm giving you a suggestion. Yeah. So, so Brian, we're in that meeting in this round. Very good.
It's like, or something happened. And it's, it's almost the ultimate.
I'm trying to think of a guy's name, Jack Johnson. One of the first houses that we'll build on.
I've read people's... Camera had the opportunity to do that. She enjoyed the visit. And Kirsten said, geez, it's tied with someone's... You've never cracked a river broken.
What they could do, they go, look at the credit.
I do have a child. It's right in there. I believe in my mind, it's right close.
It just makes everything bad.
Yeah.
People seem to write a door out that we don't eat.
Yes. I had a, I'm...
About eight thirty, next morning.
Still, we're trying to... But it's, uh...
Sour cream.
That's why I go down.
I wait for the spring and summer, fall.
I always found it all the time. It's time for it to get...
That's reason if, if...
Just...
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, each other? Okay.
Okay.
We're going to begin. Just a quick reminder, turn your microphone towards you. And whenever you talk, please sit up and speak directly into the microphone. The time is now 7:01. I'd like to report to you that we began our meeting tonight at 6:00 PM. And we adjourned into an executive session. The time is now 7:01 PM. And the executive session has concluded. The participants in the exec... Ooh, executive session were David Turley, mayor.
Eric Smith.
Gary Braveto.
Bob Carlson.
Gary Harrison.
Carol Harvey.
John Schaefer.
Aaron Smith.
David Butterey.
Sally Riley.
If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during that executive session, or that any improper action occurred during that executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, we'll go into our agenda for tonight. And at this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no ceremonies, presentations, or appointments tonight. Item five, additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. We are going to add an item 10B for new business. And we're going to get a report by our city attorney concerning the legalization of marijuana. And so we'll get an update from her as item 10B. Item six is the consent calendar. And I'll read that. And item six A, approve the minutes of the November the first... Is that correct? November the first?
Yes.
Okay. November the first, 2012 regular meeting. Approve the October 2012 statement of expenditures and authorize the mayor to sign warrants and payment thereof. Approve application from Woodland Park Beer Garden LLC for renewal of a beer and wine liquor license for Woodland Park Beer Garden located at 111 South Center Street to be effective November the sixth, 2012. Cindy has worked, Cindy's not with us tonight, but she's worked all these items. And there are no issues relative to any of these. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call on that for approval.
Robert Carlson.
Yes.
Terry Harrison.
Yes.
Carol Harvey.
Yes.
John Schaefer.
Yes.
Eric Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Turley.
Yes.
And Gary Braveto.
Yes. Thank you, council.
Cursing unanimously.
Thank you, council. Thanks, Lisa. We'll, we have no unfinished business that we'll be conducting tonight. We will move on to item eight, ordinances on initial posting. First item is to consider ordinance number 1176, providing supplemental appropriation to the 2012 budget on initial posting and set the public hearing for December the fifth, 2012. And for that, we'll turn to our finance director, Kelly Case.
Thank you, Mayor Turley and city council. Ordinance 1176 and 1177, before we get started, I'd just like to bring to your attention that these ordinances are on initial posting. And if there are any discrepancies or changes that the council wishes to make, we can make those changes and bring those back to you in proper form at the public hearing, which would be November, December fifth. So keep that in your mind as we go through these two ordinances, and we'll respond accordingly. So the first is 1176, which is providing supplemental appropriation for the current 2012 budget. And through the year, after we have adopted our budget, which is the end of the prior year, things come to light, or we receive funding in different ways, that give us the opportunity to do some things that weren't anticipated. And that is what is listed on page two of the ordinance. The, I, unless you would like me to, I wasn't going to go through them line by line because they're pretty specific and detailed on the sheet. But after your review and any questions that you might have, we would be glad to answer those, and we would recommend approval and setting the public hearing for December fifth.
Any questions for Kelly on, on the items in, for ordinance 1176 on first reading?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have a statement to make.
I submitted a number of questions, and if that's more appropriate to discuss at the second hearing, the public hearing in two weeks, that would be fine with me. Do you expect some comment from us today?
That's certainly your discretion. If there are things that you think are worthy for the council to discuss before this goes for initial posting, this would be the time to do that, if you think there are substantive changes to it. And that way, we could then publish it as part of the ordinance process for the public hearing. If there are small things, clarification things, and we can handle those outside of this forum, that would be fine too. So it really is your, the council's call.
Bob?
No, I've already made those comments, and you recognize that there are perhaps some changes that need to be made in the final ordinance.
I think there was one change that we've already incorporated, and it was a numerical issue. So we've got that one under control.
It's the Red Mountain Adventure Park and the general fund. And I had included the 100% of the project, when in fact, a portion of that was already appropriated. So we have changed that from $136,000 to 79,250. So actually, the supplemental for the general fund has been reduced.
I'm going to ask that same question for, for example, the second item there, 111, 39, 10, mayor expenses. We have $3,000. We had an initial appropriation for mayoral expenses. This is $3,000 more?
Correct. It's a supplemental appropriation. So these numbers are in addition to. And I think the reason, Mayor, that we had more expenses, because we had to order new mayor's pens. There was also your participation in the CML conference that the previous mayor did not go to, you know, for that past year. So if you want a detailed list of what those expenses are, we can certainly provide them.
No, that's okay. And just for the record, as mayor, I do a lot more travel. And so, I mean, I have numerous meetings down in Colorado Springs, had a couple in Denver, and I do claim mileage for those. Because it gets pretty expensive if you don't. And so I do that. So that's probably a part of that also.
Absolutely is.
Okay.
I have a general comment. In your response back to me, you said that the, the numbers that you come in here are different than the ones in the 2013 budget for the end of year 2012. Because your, this was, your estimates for the end of year 2012 were done at a different time, a month earlier than when you did the budget. And so that accounts for a lot of the differences between what you're saying you need in the 2012 budget, but also compared to what you have in the 2013 budget for projected end of year 2012. So that tends to be a little confusing when you've got different sets of numbers for 2012. And my only recommendation is that perhaps next year, we try to stick with one set of numbers, you know, for the end of year 2012. Whatever you're asking for in, in end of year supplemental should also show in the 2013 budget for end of year 2012, if at all possible. And perhaps you can discuss that.
I'd be happy to. And actually, it's not a one-month difference. It's two months and maybe even three, depending on what the, what the particular fund is. So as we described in the budget process, when we budget something, it's our best guess for the next year. And as we get into that year, and we're halfway through it preparing for the next year, we do a projection as to how we think the year is going to end. And then as we march on towards the end of the year, we get better clarity on each of the different funds. And so that's what these numbers reflect. And so it's not intended to confuse, but it's more intended to make sure that we have the most accurate information as you make your decisions on the next year's budget. So that, I think we've done a pretty good job of explaining what that process is and how this gives us a better, more accurate number.
Right. But my counteroffer would then be updating those numbers you developed three months earlier as you're doing this ordinance. You know, just update the budget, because both documents basically come...
Sure.
...to us at the same time.
I believe we can do that.
Okay.
I think we can do it as part of this ordinance process.
Right. Okay. And the other general comment I had was, whereas the city of Woodland Park's revenues are projected to exceed the amount budgeted for 2012 and exceeded expenditures in years preceding 2012, providing an unreserved fund balance in the listed funds, or additional grant awards have been received providing funding in the expenditures, and blah, blah, blah. But there's nowhere in this document, this document for the ordinance, that projects 2012, what you think is, is the balance, you know, what be the additional revenues at the end of 2012, that would lead you to say, okay, I can spend 500 more thousand dollars in 2012. So that, it would be helpful to have what you think is an updated projection for the end of 2012.
The projection for the 2012 revenues wouldn't change. The expenses, because our projection is based on information that will not have changed in the previous two months. The expenses do though, for that, for 2012.
And those final numbers will come to us in the final budget for, what do you, I forget the right terminology, the final that we get on the budget.
Correct.
The, what is that? That's... Yes, that's the...
Financial statements.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Where you will have...
Yes, sir.
...the exact final figures for 2012.
Yes, sir. And that's made available to the council by April 30th of each year, following year. And that is the final. And it is fixed in time and won't change once those financial statements are issued. Correct.
One comment I would like to make on this, this list, it's the sixth one down in the general fund, 100-1169410. The vehicle, you may recall in the initial budget presentation, we were recommending that we replace the code enforcement vehicle in 2013 as part of the RLF program. And there's just been a bit of a change in our operation, plus we have an opportunity to get that vehicle in 2012 at a significant savings. And it's actually on a lot with our name on it. And we want, we have the ability to pay cash for that at the end of this year, rather than adding it to the RLF. And it lets us address an operational issue. So we're going to move forward with that. We just think it's a smart thing to do. It just, it's not an additional expenditure of monies, it's just moving it from 2013 to 2012. You'll recall, we did that with a VAC truck one year as well. Are there other questions on the supplemental appropriation ordinance?
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1151.
1176. 1176.
Second. Amending 1151.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approving ordinance number 1176 on initial posting and set the public hearing for December the fifth. Any other discussion from council? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Braveto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Now we'll move on to ordinance 1177, appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth for the 2013 budget year on initial posting and set the public hearing for December the fifth, 2012. And for that, we turn to Kelly Case also.
Thank you, Mayor Turley, council. This ordinance is prepared in accordance with the budget document that we have been reviewing over the past few meetings. It, it should agree to everything. And as I said when we began this discussion, that if there are changes, it will be reconciled and balanced to your requests for you at the public hearing on December fifth. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and we recommend approval and set the public hearing for December fifth.
Any questions or comments?
Just one on a capital outlay for leases, vehicles, and equipment. Does that number of 67,397 reflect the deduction of the 21,000 for the code enforcement vehicle?
It does not, but we will adjust for that in our spending during the 2013 year. We have not adjusted anything that was presented in the draft budget, but our operation will. And if it is the council's desire, we can do that. I'm happy to.
Okay. Any other comments? Again, this is for initial posting. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 1177, series 2012.
Second.
Having a motion and a second for approving ordinance number 1177. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Okay. Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Braveto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Lisa. We'll move on to item 8C. And there is a correction in the agenda for the public hearing date, and I'll read the correct date. This is to consider ordinance number 1175, amending chapter 6.04, 18.06, 18.09, and 18.33 of the municipal code related to the keeping of domestic fowl on initial posting and set the public hearing for December the fifth, 2012. And for that, I'll turn to Scott Woodford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. What I thought I'd do is lead you through a little presentation on where this ordinance came from and why you're seeing it tonight. The motivation for the ordinance, this has sort of been an issue that's been becoming more of an issue over time, as people start to request these types of uses here in Woodland Park. I think it's responding to national trends for movements towards local food production and sustainability. So we've been getting calls from residents over time about wanting to do this and wondering if it was legal in Woodland Park. And our code does not address this use because it's sort of a, it's sort of a new use. And because that use isn't specifically listed in our code, we have been telling people that it's not allowed in, in Woodland Park. We've also received some support. We've received a petition. I'm sorry.
What's the rationale for that? Why? Because it's not the code that you make an automatic assumption that it's not permitted?
Would you please address that?
It's the way that our code is drafted, a table of permitted uses. And it goes to the specific, why interpretation of the specific language in the code. So it was my advice to staff to advise.
In other words, if I have mice in my house, and because I, you know, because you don't have a code dealing with mice, I'm not permitted to have mice in my house.
You know, if you were going to start a mice farm, we might have to address that.
Where does this end?
It's the use. It's the use that...
But where does it end? Domestic fowl? What are we going to do next? Camels, sheep? We make an exception for each thing that we have here, or what? I don't know. I don't understand this. Why are we having a specific ordinance dealing with chickens?
Well...
Why can't we make it just a general rule saying, it is permitted? Just make it, make it permitted.
Well, the reason behind the...
Unless it causes a public nuisance, and you have another code dealing with public nuisances?
The reason behind the ordinance is because it does have potential impacts to neighbors that we want to make sure that we mitigate and, and prevent from happening.
Well, my mice in my house have a potential impact on neighbors too. You want to make code for that too?
If you requested that, you know, this was a citizen-driven request to consider allowing and regulating domestic fowl. And so we've followed the process of citizens' requests coming through the planning commission, and then they're bringing their recommendation to you this evening in initial posting process.
I just have a problem with, against what Aaron said too here, whereas the keeping of domestic fowl is not currently addressed in the Woodland Park municipal code, and therefore the policy for planning department is that they are not permitted. I just have a problem with that. Okay. As we, as we go through that, I think we'll hear from each council member. I think what this does, my comment would be that it puts some restrictions on where these can be so that they don't interfere with adjacent properties. And so that's part of the, the issue in, in trying to keep that under somewhat of a control. Aaron?
And I will just add that it's consistent with the way that the code has been interpreted in prior instances. When the issue came up several years ago, probably 2007, on whether or not adult entertainment uses could be, were a use that could exist in the city, those were not addressed in the code. And based on my interpretation of the code at that time, the, I advised staff that those were not allowed uses. And so the city moved forward with a scheme of regulation which allowed those uses, but also regulated them.
Uh, yeah, yes, Eric.
You know, it's always a fine line. And I tend to, you know, to me, it's where do you, the amount of regulation is becoming overwhelming. You know, I heard some statistic that there's been 900 new regulations on a federal basis over the last 30 days. And so, you know, we continue to regulate, and continue to regulate, and continue to regulate. And Sally and I actually talked about this some time ago before it ever came to Planning Commission, and I raised the number of the same issues. As I read through the ordinance that talks about the animals, there's no discussion of cats. And so, you know, the question next will be, well, you know, do we need to regulate cats somehow? There's no discussion of dog houses. Should we start regulating where dog houses can be placed? And should there be a ZDP process that they have to go through to make sure that a dog house is 15 feet away from the property line? And, and on and on. So I understand Gary's thoughts here, and, you know, I guess maybe some regulation is required. I have a hard time going to the point where we've got to require a ZDP and somebody has to pay money. To me, you set the regulations in place, and if there becomes a problem, we have a code enforcement officer that can go out and say, you didn't meet the regulations, therefore you got to move your coop, or you have seven chickens and you can only have six. That might be another way to kind of cut through some of the, some of the regulations. That might be another way to kind of cut through some of the, some of the regulation to try to take some of the government out, but yet we still have some controls. So I don't know where I'm going to fall on this one.
Neither.
And to me, it's a fine line. I mean, we're always picking those fine lines.
Bob?
Mayor, would it be okay if our staff member finishes his presentation? Then we can move to the questions and the discussion.
Sure.
It seems like we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit.
Okay. So based on that motivation for the ordinance, we started on a process of drafting an ordinance. And as we do with other code amendments and ordinances, we seek not to recreate the will. This, there've been plenty of chicken, backyard chicken ordinances adopted in the last twenty years. There's probably thousands of them by now. And so we didn't feel the need to come up with something new, but take and see what other people are doing and see what works best for Woodland Park. And based on three pretty long work sessions with the planning commission, we got to the point of what we felt was appropriate for Woodland Park. It was taking bits and pieces from different ordinances and also got feedback from actual chicken owners because nobody, none of us, staff or planning commissioners were experts on backyards chickens. And we actually had some folks that do do this stuff and were able to advise us on what was appropriate and what we could leave out and what we should have in. And that we might call on that person tonight to help us out who's in the audience. Based on all that, the planning commission adopted the ordinance four to one on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. And just to lead you through what the structure of the ordinance so that you understand it and know where we're coming from. First step was to add a definition of what domestic fowl is to make sure that we keep it pretty focused. And on page one of the ordinance, there is a definition that says, "Any fowl, including any chicken, duck, goose, turkey, pigeon, or other fowl excluding roosters or cocks." And there's a definition of rooster, which is a mature male domestic fowl. We wanted to make sure that the roosters weren't allowed because those are generally considered to be the noise makers, and that's an impact that we wanted to prevent. We put the definition in title six, which is animals in the municipal code, and we also put it in title eighteen, which is the zoning portion. And we refer in title six to title eighteen where all the standards are going to be. Yes, sir?
You made a statement that roosters and stuff make noise. Have you ever heard of chicken?
Yes. Yeah, they don't make a whole lot more noise than a dog does.
We've got an ordinance on dog noise, don't we?
We don't, we don't regulate dog barking unless it's a nuisance.
Could we finish? Could we allow Scott to finish the presentation?
I would ask that we go ahead and let, go through it, keep your questions, and we'll go through them and discuss them. I just have to stop initially because I'm trying to figure out, you know, where he's coming from in his definitions here. So I can understand it. Write it down, and then we'll ask when we get through it. Please.
Okay. Thank you. Then we needed to go through the step of considering what kind of use it would be and where it would be allowed. This use of keeping of domestic fowl would be considered to be an accessory use to a single-family use, a primary use. And what the two locations that the planning commission felt were appropriate were in the single-family zone districts, the suburban residential and the urban residential. So this would only be allowed in single-family, on single-family lots, not duplexes, not triplexes, not multifamily, only in those locations. And it also be, could be allowed in a PUD. For instance, like Stone Ridge, if they came through during approval, they could request that that use be built in to their approval. If they don't do it at the time of approval and a homeowner comes in later and wants to do it, then they would have to amend their PUD, which would probably be difficult for them to do or a deterrent. But that would be the way the PUD, that would be the way it would be allowed in a PUD. Also added chicken coops as an accessory use allowed in the same zone districts. And then we established a new eighteen thirty-three one forty-five called Keeping of Domestic Fowl Standards. And we did, we kind of went around and around on whether or not a zoning development permit should be required or not. I mean, the thought was, let's try to make this as non-burdensome as possible to folks, which we're all online with. The reason, two reasons why we decided, or the planning commission decided to go with that. One, a chicken coop is required, and it's an accessory structure, just like a shed. If anybody wants to build a shed right now, they have to come in for a ZDP anyway. So we felt if they're going to have to do a chicken coop, they'd have to come in for a ZDP for, just for that portion because we're looking to make sure that it's not in the setbacks, not in easements, it's not too tall, those kinds of things. And the second reason, we recommended that a zoning development permit be required is based on our discussions with the city of Fountain, the planner there. They've had an ordinance for several years now, and they have that step. And they think it's a good step because it helps to, they get a, when people get approved for one, they have a list of all the standards so that they're aware of what the standards are. And they said it helps keep people kind of honest and makes them remember what the standards are. And it also helps them track them if somebody calls up a neighbor, say, I've got a, I've got a neighbor that's doing a chicken coop, do they have a permit? And we can look on our list and say, yeah, they're legal. The other thought was, I mean, the permit cost, yes, it is, there is a cost and there is a permit, but it's thirty-four dollars, and it's a pretty quick turnaround, three to seven days. So, I mean, I think we can go either way. It's just the way that the planning commission decided was best. Terms of the standards, all such operations must meet the standards, review of compliance with ZDP. The planning commission ended up with a maximum of six adult chickens and six under six months at any given time. They must be kept in the backyard. The footprint for the chickens would be no more than a hundred and twenty square feet. It'd have to be a fenced area, a hundred and twenty square feet, which is ten by twelve, not a very big area. That was to, that was put in by some of the planning commissioners so that they would be more amenable to the concept overall. There's some folks that think that having a little more space for the chickens to run actually is better for the chickens and more healthy, makes more healthy chickens, but that's where we, that's where we ended up on that one. There's a requirement that the waste be stored in containers and removed every seven days, that the premises may be inspected by code enforcement and code enforcement. And if we get complaints, our code enforcement officer would be the one to go and inspect and make sure that they're complying with the standards. There is a requirement for no outdoor slaughtering, which you'll notice the key word is outdoor slaughtering, does not preclude people from doing it indoors. And then the chicken coop requirement, that size requirement is limited to a hundred and twenty square feet as well, ten feet in height. Like I said, it must be in the backyard, and then minimum setbacks from property line, fifteen feet from the side and twenty-five feet from the rear, shall be predator-proof. Obviously, if these things are not fenced properly, they will not be around for very long. So there's a requirement that they are predator-proof and that the colors and the materials of the coop be complementary to the, to the main house. Based on that, staff and planning commission have recommended approval of ordinance eleven seventy-five on initial posting and set the public, recommending setting the public hearing for December fifth. Okay, now I'm ready for some questions.
Any questions, comments from council? And keep in mind, this is initial posting, and so if you have some specifics, now would be a good time to address them. Yes, Bob?
I assume we have an ordinance addressing domesticated animals in general? Why are we signaling out chickens? I mean, are the mules up on sixty-seven north authorized to be in the city limits?
The only thing that we, the only thing that the code regulates is, it has an animal section, but it's all about dogs. It's only dogs.
Okay, so we need a donkey ordinance next and then everything else? Why can't we just say domesticated animals are allowed? And then everything else about coops and setbacks and everything is already addressed in various other sections of the code that require them to come in and get approval of the sheds or the coops? Or noise ordinances with regard to, for roosters? And to answer Gary's question, I live, grew up in Asia. It was the roosters that woke me up at five in the morning, not the chickens. Okay. So there is a different level of noise. But that's all addressed by noise ordinances. And so I think we have enough things in place for controlling the pest issue. I mean, the, where it would disturb a neighbor. I mean, was any consideration given to that idea, too?
So domesticated animals being dogs and cats and mice or hamsters? What, I mean, as opposed to like a horse and donkey and all that?
Well, they're all domesticated, geese, turkeys, et cetera. And if you want to, geese are very noisy. I mean, the Romans used those as their perimeter guards, you know, back in the one hundred B A.D. Geese were the, you know, alarm systems and stuff like that.
Let's stay focused on exact issue.
No, so it would be basically allowing domesticated animals, but you have these other controls that would, you know, talk about cleanliness and noise and setback distances, you know, and that sort of thing.
Sally, I want to clarify something quickly, though, on the dogs. It's a number of dogs, is my recollection. And I also, also thought that we had an ordinance on horses that prohibits them, and those properties that have them were grandfathered in. So they had their horses before that ordinance was passed. I understand the concept. It, what I've learned is that the more you try to make things fair, the more difficult it becomes. There are domesticated animals that don't make noise, and we may not, I'm not so sure that we want to address those, pot-bellied pigs, different things like that, chameleons, boa constrictors. Those are, some of those are still considered domesticated. I think what we wanted to do was, we wanted to address an issue that came to us and not make it too broad. We wanted to do something we could get our hands around. And again, it was driven by a request from the community. So I, we could certainly approach it a different way, but it may just, by making it so fair, we may just make it very difficult.
Terry had an expression. I'll come back, Gary.
Scott, with the, with the chicken, why do these folks, what's the purpose of these chickens? Are they pets or?
I think it's a variety of things. It's the eggs, the farm-fresh eggs that you can get. Some people have them, like them for pets. They take care of your yard with the weeds and the bugs.
Well, let's back up to this egg thing because I can promise you, if you don't have roosters, you're not going to have eggs.
That's not true.
They're just, they're just not...
I have, I have eight chickens. Not in my place, but joint ownership, and we get plenty of eggs.
They're not fertile, though. I mean, you can't produce more chickens.
I don't want more chickens.
Okay. Do you have something else?
Well, and with the coop thing, did we, did planning look at the manure situation that...
Yeah, sure.
In a, what'd you say, a hundred and fifty-foot area?
Hundred and twenty square feet.
Hundred and twenty square foot area?
There's a requirement in there that they, that they remove the manure buildup every seven days. Does that answer your question?
And mitigate the smell?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. To answer your question, Gary, I mean, we're not going to send our code enforcement officer every seven days out there, but it does provide a standard that if we do get complaints, we at least have something to hang our hat on.
And you defined the chicken coop, certain dimension and all that stuff. And the purpose of the chicken coop, I suppose, is to prevent predators from getting at the chickens? If you didn't have the chicken coop, you wouldn't have a problem. You wouldn't need an ordinance. Predators would take care of the situation, wouldn't they?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So if you didn't have the chicken coop, the predators would take care of the situation. You wouldn't need the ordinance.
There'd be no chickens.
There'd be no chickens. With domestic fowl or whatever you want. I think it's overregulation, guys. I'm sorry. I think this is, I'm with Eric over here, he says, you can overregulate us to death. I mean, I'm not a child. You know, I don't want to be treated like one in a, in a town like this. And I think, you know, there's got to be some sort of maturity level here. You can't regulate everything in life that goes on here in Woodland Park. I'm out. I'm out of here.
I think the concern on this is if we didn't regulate it, you know, you could have fifty, sixty chickens in the backyard.
You didn't regulate it for the last twenty, what, thirty years?
And you could have, then that's when maybe the smell becomes an issue. That's when the noise becomes an issue. That's when...
Don't we have another ordinance that deals with smell or adverse noise and stuff like that? Aren't we don't currently have? If a neighbor has a problem with someone that has chickens in their yard, what's their recourse right now?
Well, it's not allowed.
No, if it was allowed, I mean, not even, if a neighbor has a problem with someone with chickens and animals, what's their recourse?
Well, if it met any of our other ordinances, if...
Noise, uncleanliness, et cetera. We already have existing ordinances that deal with those things. Why we have to be specific about domestic fowl is beyond me.
Well, so we don't have to go to the...
Then you extend it to other things. As you indicate. I mean, how many things we're going to extend it to? We're going to be specific about? Let's stick with this. And I don't want it to get argumentative, we're just asking questions. Okay. I'm going to, I have a couple myself. Is there any issue on this as relates to covenants in neighborhoods?
Yes.
So if we approve this, covenants in neighborhoods could still prohibit these, correct?
Yes. In fact, I looked through the existing covenants that we have on file, and just about ninety percent of them precluded domestic fowl or chickens.
Okay. And if this ordinance is not approved, are domestic fowl, in this case chickens, not allowed? I mean, we've been given that advice, but I just want to make sure that the code that's in the books, that the answer will be you're not allowed to have them, and if you have them, you're breaking the code. Is that correct?
That's the, that's what we first...
Well, it goes back to my original question, since why do we, why do we not allow it as a general rule now? I mean, we could change that, too. We're not saying anything and just don't say it's not allowed or anything. We just don't have a position on it. Let cases by cases come as an individual case. Okay. Bob?
That would be my position, is that when somebody asks, are they allowed, you say yes instead of no. And then when people, when it becomes a problem, too noisy or too, then, of course, then you react to those cases.
And that would certainly be the ideal situation. However, getting back to Councilman Rovetto's question on what would the neighbor's remedy be in if there is a manure problem, a fly problem on their neighbor's property? They don't have a remedy currently under the code. Our code has provisions to prohibit public nuisances, and the law is quite clear that a single neighbor's concern does not rise to the level of public nuisance under Colorado law. So where there may be a remedy if the chickens are noisy under the noise ordinance, the noise might be able to be mitigated or addressed or enforced through the noise ordinance. But the flies, the manure problem, the intrals, the chicken parts that may end up in the dumpsters, those, a neighbor would not have any remedy currently under...
Could it become under a health issue? Could we come under a health issue? They certainly have recourse saying this is, you know...
Again...
A health issue for the neighbor.
Health issues are public nuisance issues, so you fall into the same general concern.
So you'd have to have more than one neighbor complain?
Yeah, it'd have to rise to the level of what the law would find a public nuisance.
And how many neighbors you would have to...
It's a question of fact.
I mean, how many neighbors would have to complain before it becomes a public nuisance?
It's a question of fact.
Bob, you had, you were next.
So, so right now, our code addresses, in a sense, public health issues. So in other words, if somebody has thirty-eight cats in their house that they keep inside, terrible inside, but it's not a public health issue, and so it's permitted under our code.
Do we have limits on numbers of cats?
Not on cats.
We don't regulate cats with, we do have a manure ordinance. That's what it's worth.
Okay. We do have a manure ordinance.
Leftover from horses.
Eric?
Like I said before, I think this is a fine line. I'm okay with moving forward on the ordinance because I think there probably need to be some parameters. I will take the example, though, and I don't agree with Aaron on this. Just because it's not stated in the code, in my opinion, doesn't mean that it's disallowed. That's just the way I feel. I know that there are a lot of things that aren't stated in the code that we allow in town, considering, including white fences. I know we... I know we talk about fences, we don't talk about white fences. I know children are not discussed in the code. I mean, we can go on and on and on. Cats are not in the code. So from that perspective, to say that if it's not in the code, I mean, to me, the burden, the burden lies with us. And that's the way I feel. That being said, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, and I'd like to see this go forward. I have a question and then a thought. I guess I'll start with a thought. I would like to see us reduce the cost of the ZDP down to $10. Because I just think this is a very, I mean, I would like to do away with the ZDP process as it relates to this. We do not have a ZDP process for dog houses. And a dog house technically could be built, and I guess that would be an accessory structure. So I would, I would say if we're going to stick with the ZDP process, I would take it down to 10 bucks. And that's probably good enough for me. And then my question is, there's two, we talked about the number, and we said that we can have six that are above the age of six months old, and then we can have six that are younger. So my question is, is if you have six that are six months or older, and then you have six chicks that are under six months, what happens when those six chicks grow up? I mean, do you, do you start moving the other ones out? Or?
No rooster, there's no chicks.
Well, no, 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 I go out, I go out, I go out and I buy six mature chickens, and I get six chicks. So when those six chicks hit six months and a day, do I have to start getting rid of the other chickens? If we're going to do that, in my mind, we should just say, no more than six. I don't care what age they are, and then we just, it's six. So if you want to buy six chicks, they grow up to be six chickens. If you want to buy six chickens, you got six chickens. But I would hate to buy six chicks and six chickens, and then my daughter, I got to tell that I got to kill off one of her chickens or get rid of it, because it's her pet now, and I just, I don't know why we just don't limit it to six.
This is one of the reasons why I have a problem with an ordinance like this, is now you're defining how many chickens I can have. Are you going to define now the color of chickens we need to have? Are you going to define now, do we have to have them manicured, or what? You know, what's the level and what's the extent that we have to regulate what goes on here?
If there's no other reason for having them, and there may not be a reason to have the six young ones, I think we're okay. I mean, Norma, Norma's been our expert, unless she has, do you have any specific reason why that would be in there, Norma?
We're not taking public comment tonight, this is initial posting.
Okay. I'd, I'd be willing to, I, I don't understand that one either, especially if you don't allow roosters and you don't allow the turnover.
I would just say if six is what we're trying to get to, ultimately, I would just say six.
Okay.
I bet this was a lot of fun in Planning Commission.
It was, lots of laughs.
Yes, Bob.
This reminds me of the zero tolerance policies, law that was applied to schools and plastic knives and things like that. You're being overly prescriptive and not allowing judgment. And I think we're being overly prescriptive in this. And when it does come to a vote, I'm going to oppose it. Thank you.
Terry?
I would, since it is a national posting, I would move that we go ahead and ask the question, because I can remember the last time a chicken came into this council meeting, 18 months later, we finally entered a sign code.
That's right.
I think it was longer than 18 months.
I, I don't want this to be here when I'm, when I'm leaving, but it is initial posting, David.
Okay, I agree. Any other comments on initial posting? Carol?
No.
Well, I've been sitting here trying to think if I can add any enlightenment to this discussion.
We hope you can.
No, and I could also claim I'm a farm boy from West Virginia.
Uh-oh.
Well, that was my. I thought we were breeding.
And chickens are noisy, and chickens are dirty. But I'd be lying. However, my wife had chickens in her family. Yeah. I, I, very dirty. I don't know how else to describe it. I do see a difference here in the number six and 12, as I read through this, the maximum. That's, there's some confusion there. I would also ask, what constitutes predator proof? And I wonder if anyone discussed this in the Planning Commission, that in fact, chickens will draw predators, regardless of what kind of predator-proof chicken coop you have. And I'd also like to know, how many hours did the Planning Commission spend on this ordinance? Lot of questions, but I didn't intend them to be rhetorical, Scott.
Oh, you did not?
No.
Oh, you want me to answer them now?
Yeah.
What constitutes predator proof? There's no definition. I mean, it's, it's just anything that would prevent a predator from getting in. It's as simple as that. I mean, however somebody wants to design it, I mean, it's, it's their loss if, if they don't design it properly. In terms of how many hours spent, I'd say maybe, all total, two, three hours in, in three work sessions.
I did happen to read the minutes of a couple of those meetings, and it went on and on like it's going on and on at this meeting.
We don't have many development cases right now, so we like to talk about something.
Counsel, please.
So my knee-jerk response was, I don't want chickens in my neighbor's yard. But then I read through the ordinance and I see that 70 petitioners signed up, and then I thought, well, why not? People want to have chickens for whatever reason. I don't know how I'm going to vote yet.
In terms of attracting predators, I guess the response to that is that there's plenty of attractions to predators in this town with trash left out, bird feeders, things of that nature. So I'm not sure that we're going to increase the, the predator population in Woodland Park any with this, but that's just my opinion.
And, and if we do pass this, keep in mind that we, maybe it'll take more time, but we will hear from the public, public hearings on this, you know, at the public hearing, and, and see if, you know, if there are any comments from our citizens relative to this ordinance. Yes, sir.
I was going to say, I appreciate the opportunity to be heard, and I think we've had a good discussion. I'd like to move that we, that we approve ordinance 1175 on initial posting, and we can have more discussion during the public hearing on December 5th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having a motion and an enthusiastic second. Any, any further discussion on the initial posting? Hearing none, we will take a vote.
Schaefer? Schaefer?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
No.
Carlson?
I'm willing to let the public speak, so I'll pass it on.
Is that a yes or a no?
Harrison?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
That's a complex one.
Passes four, four to two. Motion passes four to two.
And that is on initial posting, so we will have the public hearing at the meeting on December the 5th. Thank you. Thanks, counsel. I think. We're going to go into the public hearing section of tonight's meeting. But before I do that, I, I have something that, want to read the following into the record. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. We're using these devices strictly for information relative to the public hearing. And I guess I could probably explain a little bit, want to make sure that on quasi-judicial events or, or matters, that people aren't being texted some message relative to the issue at hand, that the rest of us would not be privileged to. So to, just to confirm that, that that's the case. Here's Terry.
Well, you know, in reading that, that only addresses this. In reality, we shouldn't, none of us should sit here, or incoming or, or previous council people should sit here with their, with their BlackBerrys or iPhones, whatever, receiving outside information on those apparatuses either, correct?
Under the open rec, open meetings law, I believe that that is the best practice to follow. But I don't think the law is absolutely clear on that in a non-quasi-judicial matter. And I think it certainly would be something that the council could decide as a policy among themselves, because I think that'd be appropriate, an appropriate way to, among yourselves, determine how you want to treat those other items that are on your agenda and how you might be communicating with third parties outside this meeting during those times.
So what we're doing is actually just addressing the city property that, that we have?
No, we're not, no, we're not using any devices to receive information during a quasi-judicial item that, that could influence our decision.
Aaron could state this much better, but just maybe to reiterate, or maybe I'll ask you to reiterate rather than I. Why don't you explain why that's important as it relates to quasi-judicial, and how we're supposed to act as judges and take that information in and make those, based on the evidence presented?
Right. Thank you, Councilman Smith. As just a reminder for council, when you are sitting in a quasi-judicial hearing, you are sitting like judges, and you are to decide the, the issue based on the evidence that's presented within the parameters of the public hearing. So as the mayor opens the public hearing, evidence is put onto the record, and when the mayor closes a public hearing, the evidence is closed. And it's that evidence that the applicant is privy to, the council as a decision-maker is privy to, and all the public who may or may not have an interest in it are privy to. And so everybody is playing on a level playing field and, and is, it, it has the ability to respond. The public has a real ability to respond to what they've heard, the applicant has the ability to respond to what he's heard, and then council has the ability to, as all seven of you hearing, having heard the same things, make your decision based on the same evidence. So it's, from a constitutional standpoint, it's important, it's the rights of all the interested parties, decision-makers, public, and especially the rights of the applicant that aren't, are not infringed from a procedural or a substantive due process constitutional standpoint. So it's, it's a matter of constitutional law that the mayor gave that advisement. And that's what underpins the advisement.
Then I think I, I misheard what David read. I, I thought with what he read, it said, using the iPads.
Electronic devices.
All electronic devices.
Correct.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes, another question? Comment? Okay?
And thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
It is all electronic devices.
I read what Aaron gives me. No, but it's, it's worth, because, you know, people see us doing things, and we have to make sure that we stay within it. Yes, Gary? I can appreciate that, but I have a situation here, too, that, you know, I have a phone on me as an emergency. If any one of my kids has to get a hold of me, they need to get a hold of me. And if they get a hold of me and it is an emergency, I'm out of here. And if I don't have that phone on me, I won't know. Well, you can have the phone, I mean, man, it's laying right here. It's an electronic device. It is, I didn't say you couldn't have it. You can't access materials relative to the public hearing before us. And meanwhile, you know, we'll, let's include that exact statement in the minutes. And so that's for the record. And, and, and in fact, if any emergency situation comes up with any council member, I would expect you to not just get up and walk out, but state, I have an issue, I need to leave right now, and excuse yourself. Okay? Including the mayor. Ready to move on? Let's move on to item 9A. This is, will be a public hearing. This is to approve ordinance 1174 regarding a conditional use permit to construct a single-family residence on the property at 420 East Midland Avenue, legally described as part of Lot 19, Block 11, Steph's subdivision of Woodland Park, except part described at 150207 as requested by Scott Downs. And for this, we will turn to Scott Woodward for our, from our Planning Department.
Thank you. Just to lead you through another presentation on this proposal. Just to orient you a little bit, because the, sort of the crux of the issue is how does this use fit into its surroundings? The, the site is located at the corner of Midland and Boundary. This is more or less the lot in question right here. Surrounding that property is a single-family here and here, and single families all across this portion of this block. Office, yeah, use on this corner. We have a dance studio, preschool, some more, some more commercial uses in this area, church, and then you get back into single-family in this area. So it's a real mixed-use area to begin with, between residential and commercial. This is just a picture of the site, more or less in this area. The applicant's going to place the home sort of in this area. They inform us that they're only going to have to remove one tree, which is good news, to make way for this house. They'll be making, there is an existing curb cut off of Midland, which, right now, accesses the house over to the west, and the applicant is in the process of creating a new curb cut to realign the driveway for that house, and then would use the curb cut over here to access their new house. And that's the house to the west. The dance studio. So this staff sees this use as basically continuing the prevalent land use pattern of the area, which is sort of mixed use. Here's a site plan of how the, the building would lay out. Here's the footprint of the house. It's about 1,080 square feet, with the driveway coming in directly off of Midland. This is a floor plan, basically, I think it's three-bedroom house. These were the submitted elevations. It's a, it's not a stick-built house, it's a manufactured house, and the applicant, because those elevations weren't very telling of what they're proposing, we had them submit these photos, and they have informed us that the elevations would be similar to these without the gigantic deck. Basically, what we're reviewing here is whether it meets all 11 of the conditional use review criteria, and we've found that, that it does. Planning Commission reviewed this and felt the same way. So we're recommending approval with these conditions. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, Bob.
The offset, property boundary offset distances of 15 feet are, and 18 feet on the other side, are they standard for this downtown area? I know in our area, it's much bit larger than that.
Well, this is actually zoned central business district, so they're, they have even less setbacks than a normal residential neighborhood would. There's a, I think it's a 10-foot front setback, they could go as close as, I think, zero on both, zero on the side and the rear. You know, those setbacks were really intended for commercial projects, but they also apply to residential projects within this commercial zone district.
But wouldn't that pose a problem to neighbors if they filled up their entire lot with a building?
Theoretically, but that's their option by right to do that. I, I don't think anybody would necessarily do that, but that's, that's their right. I mean, they still have to market the house, I mean, they don't, I don't think anybody wants to purposely live that close to their neighbor, but it's possible.
Yes, Carol?
What is the primary difference between a manufactured home and a mobile home? And do our zoning requirements address that?
Afraid you were going to ask that. Do you want to address that, Aaron?
There are a couple different schemes that address mobile homes and manufactured homes. There's the state law that addresses manufactured homes and mobile homes, and defines both. And makes it clear that cities can regulate both, they can impose standards on both, they just simply cannot zone out manufactured homes. As I recall, the statute calls a, what's traditionally known as a mobile home, and defines a mobile home as differently from a manufactured home, and does not give mobile homes that are older than the federal act that.
and does not give mobile homes that are older than the federal act that I passed, I believe, in the mid 70s, although I couldn't tell you the exact date. I think they're called pre-72 homes that may be 1976. Those do not have the same protection under a state law. So those can be prevented from being installed in the city anywhere. The city code does not define manufactured homes. It does define mobile home. And it appears to be a definition intended to fit more the traditional mobile home without a permanent foundation. As, as opposed to the manufactured home, which can come in, fully constructed on wheels, but then be placed on a lot on a, on a permanent foundation.
So for our purposes, we would treat a manufactured home the same as a stick-built?
Thank you, yes. Under, under the code as it currently exists.
So in this case, this manufactured home is going to be taken, the wheels won't be there to be on a permanent foundation?
That's correct.
Okay?
And are manufactured homes then titled the same as a stick-built home?
I, I can answer that, if that's okay. Once they're put on a permanent foundation, the title can be purged. And it, it goes to the, and runs with the land just like any other home.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, John?
Has the applicant had any discussions with the next-door neighbor? And the, the fact that there'll be a new curb cut?
Yes, they-
He agrees to the location of that?
Yeah, they have coordinated on that. And he can address it again when he comes up, but that's, that's the information that's been relayed to me. And I've spoken with the gentleman too, that owns-
Scott is the applicant here tonight?
The applicant is here tonight.
Would he like to make any comments or presentation? Okay?
Anything I say could take me down from where I am.
Come on, come on up, Scott.
But anyway.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Scott Downs, and I live at 710 Sunrise Circle here in Woodland Park. And gotta tell you what an honor it is to follow a chicken ordinance here tonight. And boy, you already have chickens in town, so that, that'll be a fun one for you. Really, you guys have already asked the questions that I would typically have to answer here. Carol, yours was good. When you, there's two codes that we can build a house by. One is the IRC code, the other's the HUD code. That's it. The HUD code is a manufactured home. The IRC code is a site-built home or a modular home. So there's your code differences. Going back to the mid 1970s when that federal act was implied and, and where we all were drawing our picture of what a mobile home is, that was some pretty nasty stuff back then. The HUD code has had five-fold more revisions in it than our old UBC IRC code as we fast forward, marching along toward today. So today, when you build a HUD code home, the only major difference in the home is in the floor system. That's really about it. Two-by-six walls with R-21, R-38, low-e windows. It's all pretty much the same stuff. But the HUD code manufactures, the way that they do their systems are typically less expensive than a modular home. And it costs a little bit more to build to the IRC code anyway. So there's your code differences. This is on a permanent foundation. It's called an FHA Title II foundation. And it's different than those of us who have built homes, no one understand, because the point loads are over the steel I-beams that are left in the floor. And so it's on caissons. Big concrete caissons that go down below frost. And then those I-beams are welded to the plates that we set in the caissons. And we have several caissons in other point load areas, entry doors, stuff like that. But it is a, it never leaves kind of an event once we, once we do this. So past that, I'm wide open to any questions you might have.
Any, any questions from council for Scott? Yes, Terry?
Scott, if I remember correctly, one of the buildings, the building just east of Napa Cirque, isn't that a, that's one of, one of your products, right?
Yes, sir. The Cirque building is a modular building. And-
With a full basement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And for any of you that's been in there, it was a, it was a good project. But the other part about this, and one of the reasons that I stepped away from being a site builder and really into working with the 18 different factories that I work with now, is our issues in Woodland Park and Teller County are labor. All the rest of it is secondary. Labor is the bane of our existence. And because of that, you could take a very simple 1,800-square-foot ranch home and turn it into a nine- or 10-month job where you got to drive by the local saloon to get the framers to come back. So that has always been what we deal with when we build here in the area. And what manufactured and modular does for us is it allows us to condense our timelines down to something that's extraordinarily manageable, it's guaranteed pricing, it gets us into some costing for the end user and the client that we can't achieve otherwise. So it's a, it's a controlled environment. I, I happen to like that. But the Cirque building was a fun project. And that was a, a commercial project in downtown Woodland Park that we did in 105 days.
Yes, Carol?
Scott, do, do you have a, a client already for this, or is this your property as a spec?
It's a spec. And to answer the question that will ultimately come up, the, I cannot remember how long it has been. And I think I actually built them since we had a new product inside the city limits under 150. But this will be.
Yes, Bob?
Yeah. And that was, one of my comment was, is we are woefully lacking affordable housing. And John, of course, is our spokesman on the city council for that particular issue. Both of us work for Habitat for Humanity to try provide housing. And it's good to see the private sector also helping out here, and so I thank you for your efforts.
Well, everything has to line up right to even make it happen, you know, from your lot cost. I mean, John knows this better than anyone, but, you know, it's, it's a struggle. One of the questions that we had at one of the meetings was, "Why aren't you putting the big deck on?" Well, you have to ask yourself, "Is it more important that I can get a client into the home at 148,000 or 149,000 or have more amenities and have to sell it at 157 and step away from maybe 15% or 20% of the buying public that absolutely needs the home?" So it's a yin and yang out there, and it's not going to get any better. But this is one chance to get one on the ground at under 150.
Any other questions, comments for Scott?
Not for Scott, I have a question for Kip.
Thank you, appreciate your time tonight.
Let's, um, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, have that, and then move on to that? This time, I'll open the floor to any public comments on, on this matter? Any? Seeing none, I'll, I'll close the floor for public comment. Yes, Carol, go ahead.
It's more along the lines of my previous question. This project would be treated as a single-family residence in terms of tap and water or sewer hookup as well?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll just follow that up, and would fit wherever it fits on number of water fixtures within the tiered system that is now in place, correct? Correct. Okay? Any other discussion comments?
Since, yeah, I do have a question of Scott. Since we're entering the winter season, when would you start building the home or assembling it?
Scott, could you come back up to the mic, that way we'll make sure we get it on the record?
The driveway's already done and curb cut, everything. And we're not disturbing the land, so as long as we don't drive on it and we're not getting any moisture. So we anticipate having the zoning development permit paid for and out by the end of next week. And we'll be able to get all of our caisson holes dug the week after and ready for county permit. But we're, we'll move right along with that. But it did remind me, I forgot to tell you guys something. We laid the house out last week, and the amount of trees that we have to take out has changed. And I think it's important that you know that. We don't have to take any trees out. So we were able to fit that in there, right in that grove of trees. So I think it's going to be pretty cool. It's a log-sided building. I think it'll be pretty cute.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve when it's 1174, subject conditions of approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation, discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravado?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Vote carries unanimously?
Very good. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, council. We'll move on to new business. Item 10A, approved resolution number 748, levying the general property taxes for the year 2012 for the 2013 budget to be adopted on December the 5th, 2012. And for that, we'll turn to Kelly Case again.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a resolution for us to certify the mill levy for next year's spending for property taxes and collections. We recommend that the mill levy be set again at 16.249 mills. That has been unchanged since 1991. So we're at 22 years, almost. The, that will be applied to the preliminary assessed valuation set by, and certified by the Teller County Assessor at almost 105 and a half million. So with any questions you might have, we recommend approval of resolution 748 and authorize the mayor and the treasurer, myself, to sign and certify the mill levy to the Teller County commissioners. What questions can I ask? Answer.
Counsel?
The only question I have is if there were a change in 22 years, that would have to go to a public vote, correct?
If it were an increase.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. In which case, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Second. Okay. Thanks, John. Any further discussion? We will take a vote.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravado?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously?
Very good, council, thank you.
Thank you, council.
And we'll move on to item 10B, which we inserted. And for that, I'm going to turn to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, what I have for you in a short report is a three-part presentation related to Amendment 64. The first would be just a short summary of what Amendment 64 accomplished. The second would be a recommendation for an initial action that council would consider taking at its December 5th meeting. And the third would be a, just by consensus, a direction to staff and to the extent the city attorney needed to be involved, the city attorney to prepare for you what you would need on December 5th to take that initial action. So starting with Amendment 64, on November 6th, 2012, the Colorado voters passed Amendment 64 for the use and regulation of marijuana. Amendment 64 provides for persons 21 years of age or older to legally consume or possess one ounce or less of marijuana without a doctor's recommendation and tax marijuana similar to alcohol. Amendment 64 also creates a framework for regulatory scheme for retail sales of marijuana. Unless specifically prohibited, special retail stores will be allowed to sell marijuana in a system of licensed establishments regulated by the state and local governments. Amendment 64 does not change existing medical marijuana laws. The timeline for prohibition, should the council want to consider that, on the retail sales, would be, this, first the state will take, is, is charged with developing regulations that it has to have in place by July 1st, 2013. And then the local governments are charged with having to have regulations in place by October of 2013. But local governments can prohibit council, by council action at any time, the retail sales portion of what's allowed under Amendment 64. And to address what is recommended, I would remind council that we are recommending a similar action as the council took when it was considering how to address medical marijuana. And the action that the council took then was to put in place a moratorium that prevented the issuance of a business license to a medical marijuana retail facility or any other related medical marijuana business until the council had time to consider whether it was going to regulate those or prohibit them. And that would be the recommended action that we are requesting that council consider taking on December 5th. And the reason is that while there is, where the, where, while the intent of Amendment 64 seems to be that there be no retail facilities or the related facilities that could be put in place until those state and local regulations are in place, no place in Amendment 64 is there an explicit prohibition that the retail, retail stores cannot start up until then. And my concern would be that one of those might start up and might be operating, and then council may decide to impose regulations that they would have to apply after the fact to that facility, or they may decide to prohibit them. And it puts both that entrepreneur, that business person, and, and the council, I think, in a difficult position. So by imposing a moratorium so that no business licenses issue until you have some time to decide what you want to do, you are, I think, avoiding that difficult situation. There may also be rolled into a separate emergency ordinance, some changes to your existing code to conform those provisions that deal right now with the unlawful use of marijuana in the city, to conform those to Amendment 64, and that would be a separate ordinance. But that is something that staff will want to discuss and will certainly want to confer with Chief Larson on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then after that, look for that consist, consensus. We would recommend that that emergency ordinance be, that the moratorium be passed on an emergency ordinance basis on December 5th. And under your charter, an emergency ordinance passed that way has a life of 90 days and then has to then be replaced with a permanent ordinance passed with a regular first and second reading. As you may know, an emergency ordinance does not require first and second reading, simply one reading, and then it goes into effect.
And it, and it would be open to public comment?
It would.
Okay? Yes, Gary?
Well, you know, now that this Amendment 64 has been approved, is essentially legalized, how does the federal law come into play here? Because we can't be violating federal law here in Woodland Park at all.
Right. And that's another aspect that we would be advising council on at that time. At, at, at a time when we can look at that issue. As you may know, just from reading the news, the state is trying to address that issue by, really at the governor level. He's trying to hopefully have some conversations with the Attorney General and, you know, maybe walk away from that meeting with some better information. But the Amendment 64 does not- But the amendment 64 does not change federal laws and the use and consumption of marijuana even under, less than an ounce, remains illegal under federal laws. Actually, so does, you know, the medical, there is no medical marijuana exclusion from federal law enforcement either, so.
Well, should we wait till the governor makes a decision before we take action?
And that would be one of the benefits of imposing a moratorium.
Yes, keep in mind, it's a moratorium, it just kind of puts it on hold so that something doesn't happen, makes it difficult. So, yes Bob?
As I understood, the moratorium, as it applied to medical marijuana, was for retail outlets in, in town. But under this particular law, individuals are allowed to grow up to six plants in their house. And any moratorium, you know, that wouldn't apply to that. So how are we going to deal with that issue?
Yeah. And, and, and actually, under the way that the city left its medical marijuana prohibition, that is allowed as well. So, those have been addressed, those home grow issues have been addressed by other communities with certain changes and additions to their zoning codes as to exactly what zones those can, those home grows can occur in. City of Woodland Park did not take that approach. And they've also imposed, they've looked at their regular existing building codes and, and looked to see if those needed to be addressed or bolstered in any way to address some of the concerns that come from the inside growing operations, inside, inside a home or inside a building growing operation.
And would that be something that staff would bring to us at that council meeting as part of that moratorium, touching upon the growing of marijuana also?
We could certainly bring to you something like that, that addresses what zones that can be done in. And, or at least some recommendations of what some other communities did.
Because I guess I'd have trouble understanding how you grow it and not possess it.
It's with the chickens.
So I would, I would, I would.
Well, and, and the possession portion of this is not addressed by our moratorium.
Simple retail sale.
Yeah, the moratorium would be on the issuance of building licenses for the retail sales, the cultivation facilities, the testing facilities, the manufacturing facilities. All new sort of businesses allowed under amendment 64.
Okay. Yes Terry?
Well, and David asked the question on the timeline of the moratorium. But Erin, can we extend that moratorium if we don't get this done?
Yeah, absolutely.
To a, a two-year period, or?
Well, certainly until the October of 2013 timeframe. I think that that's implied in amendment 64. As to what would be a reasonable extension beyond that, that's a matter of federal and state constitutional law. And typically, what the law says is the time has to be reasonable and the cases tell us that, you know, 10 months is, is a reasonable amount of time. The question would be whether the 10-month add-on after October 2013 would be reasonable within those cases that define reasonable moratoria. So it's, you know, I, I think there might be some basis for doing that. And I think it's, at this point, you may not have to do that. So, you know, I, I just think it's going to be fact-driven and, and case-driven and we'll just kind of have to proceed, I think, with some diligence. And I do think that's what amendment 64 does imply, that the local governments do proceed with some level of diligence. Now, if counsel is considering, I think it would be very helpful to the crafting of regulations, should counsel decide to do that, to know early on that that's counsel's approach. So I think it would be very helpful for staff and, and counsel to discuss in early January, perhaps early January, you know, early February, on whether counsel would consider a prohibition on those businesses. And if, if that's counsel's desire, then, you know, we can put that in place relatively quickly. But if that's not counsel's desire, we, I think, it, you know, the community and the city is, interest is served by knowing that early so that we can have time at a staff level and with the city attorney to craft regulations and have those in place by that 2000, October 2013 deadline.
So do you feel comfortable with the 90-day moratorium?
Well, I do.
I would guess.
I do, because that can be extended. The 90-day can easily be extended.
And I think, excuse me to jump in here, but when we went through the medical marijuana discussion, I believe we did the emergency ordinance, then we did another moratorium through the regular ordinance process and extended it out.
And I think we even extended it once after that.
Right.
So that would be, just making sure when we did the medical marijuana, we, we did a moratorium and then we actually did a prohibition in the ordinance. And, and so this would be a moratorium that would go in effect, I'm stating this, but it's kind of a question, that would give us that breathing room to then work through an ordinance that would go through initial reading and then passage or, or public hearing.
Is your question, an ordinance on prohibition that would go?
Whatever we decided the next step would be, that gives us the breathing room.
It does.
To, to move on to that next step, whatever that might be.
Correct.
Yes Bob?
But you did say that you kind of like to hear, hear early on in the process as you're drafting ordinances, how we might feel about something. I think we have every right in the world to regulate businesses operating out of residential property. But I would have difficulty saying, this you can plant, you can have, and that plant you can have. I mean, my wife has dozens of plants in our house, okay? And this, to discriminate once against the other, I don't, you know, that may be a little more touchy as far as, it's kind of like the chicken, chicken regulation, you know? You can have chickens, but you can't have donkeys and all that kind of stuff. Can't breed them.
Yes Eric. So I have a couple of questions. First off, if I recall, an emergency ordinance requires a unanimous vote.
It does.
So, just FYI. And then, my second question, well, I, I think it's prudent that we take our time, just like we did with the medical marijuana. I, I know the last time your, your suggestion was to allow the state to kind of work through a lot of those issues and set rules and all that sort of thing, and then we could figure out where to go from there. So I would hope we follow maybe the same process and not jump to anything, let, let others kind of figure out some of those regulatory issues. I guess one question I have as it relates to maybe if we end up going down the path eventually of prohibition, which is what my feeling would be personally. You know, can we just reaffirm the federal law, you know, so to speak, and basically say, we recognize the federal law, that it's a controlled substance and, and is illegal in federal law, therefore, we prohibit its use or growing or any such thing inside the, Bob shaking his head, no.
Well, I, I don't think that you need to go there, because amendment 64 says you can do it without having that basis. I mean, amendment 64 allows local governments to prohibit by ordinance.
Okay.
Isn't it, prohibit commercial activities, not personal ones?
Right, right. The commercial activities.
Both, that's what I asked.
The commercial activities.
But Bob, I mean, I guess, just a general question. I mean, if somebody is growing marijuana at their house, and under state constitution, that's allowable, he can step in and arrest somebody based on the federal law, can he not?
No. If I do, you get to buy his marijuana.
Go down beside discussion, please.
So only a federal agent can step in and arrest somebody on a?
We can only assist the federal agents when we're specifically asked to on a particular case.
So only a federal agent can go into somebody's house, or they can, under their direction, you could go there?
Assist them on it. But I can't just go around and make arrests under the federal statute on that. It's not the kind of statute that you would make a private arrest for in an emergency situation like a homicide on a piece of federal property or something. It's a bag of weed.
Okay, thanks.
I only have one question for Eric.
Yes sir.
Just one question for Eric. You mentioned you had chickens and stuff like that, and I just, before I make a recommendation either for or against prohibition, I'm just wondering, if you spiked that chicken feed with a little, you know, ounce of marijuana, is that an egg product? I don't know.
Gary, I would ask you to move up to the microphone for that comment, but maybe it's just as well we don't.
I would presume that I have any, which I do not, so.
Okay.
So then, yes, my final request, Mayor and counsel, would just be consensus to prepare that emergency moratorium ordinance for your December 5th meeting. Our staff to prepare.
Yes. It's not a vote, but just, you know, a consensus.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Erin. Let's move on. Any public comment? Or I, on items not on the agenda, I have no one signed up to speak. Would anyone have anything that they would like to comment on? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. We have several events coming up in town, quite a few, getting into the holidays. Tomorrow, November the 16th, we have the Third Friday Art Walk in downtown Woodland Park from 4 to 8. Saturday, November the 24th, we're going to work Thanksgiving in between all that. Saturday, November the 24th is the Mountain Artist Holiday Show and Sale at the Yoot Pass Cultural Center from 10 to 4. Saturday, December the 1st, Kiwanis Hoats Breakfast with Santa at the Yoot Pass Cultural Center from 8 to 11. Great event. Saturday, December the 1st, and Sunday, December 2nd is the Holiday Home Tour. See six local homes beautifully decorated. Benefits the Woodland Aquatic Project, Teller Senior Coalition, and the Woodland Park Hockey Association. Also on Saturday, December the 1st is the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade, followed by the tree lighting and all kinds of festivities at the Yoot Pass Cultural Center. And we will have a rookie mayor doing some things that day. Lastly, next Thursday is Thanksgiving, and on behalf of the city council, please be safe and remember that we have very much to be thankful for, especially living in Woodland Park. And I will add one other thing here that, and I don't know if this got mentioned before, but I will mention it again if it has. The Above the Clouds Cruisers just had an excellent year and they donated and, or presented $28,500 to a number of different organizations in our community, and how much we appreciate that, both for the joy that we have on the day of, the days of the event and how wonderful that is here in, in, in Woodland Park, but how much that means to so many organizations within our community. And with that, I'll turn to Eric. Anybody? Bob? Yes ma'am?
Yes. David, I wondered if we were ever going to see the Waldo Canyon Fire After Action Report?
The mayor and I actually talked about that this morning. He and I are meeting on Monday of next week to talk about the CML conference. And so the Waldo Canyon Fire followed that chronologically and, and I actually put some files together and I'll begin working on that. So it, it's coming. It's not prepared yet, though.
Thank you.
And just added that, David and the staff are working through all that. I mean, they've been working and, and bringing that together. I've taken all of my comments and, and kind of congealed that into one thing that I haven't got quite organized where I want to be, but we'll be doing that very shortly. Then, now I'll turn to Erin.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have a short report. It's more of a request and that would be for, by motion and second and a vote of counsel to authorize the city attorney to file the appropriate pleadings in the Canary matter.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carries unanimously?
Thank you. David?
Three things, Mayor, this evening. First, to counsel and listening audience, just a reminder that our meeting in December, the first meeting in December, will be Wednesday, December 5th. Wednesday, December 5th. Recall you approved that some months ago. 7 o'clock, normal time. Secondly, the president of the Woodland Aquatic Project Board asked me to request a postponement of the work session that I've been working with you on. It was, we'd gotten down to a couple of dates, but they've asked us to postpone that. They're still working on some of their numbers and I think we should respect that request. And we'll keep you posted on when they would like to get together. And lastly, this evening, Brian Fleer has a quick update on the DDA.
Welcome Brian, and I'd just like to, on behalf of myself and counsel, welcome you to serving us as our Director of Economic Development and as the Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority. Brian's been very busy since he arrived and had a lot of meetings with a lot of different people, including myself. We spent a couple of hours together the other day and looking forward to being a, a very good relationship and, and, you know, we look forward to your leadership here. So, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Turley and counsel. And it has been a humbly experience to come back into the fold, so to speak. It's been a kind of a non-stop, I call it meet and greet tour over the last two weeks. Very productive. Three things quickly, I had an opportunity to meet with all the DDA board members, as, as the mayor said, we had the opportunity to sit down and chat, very frankly, about, you know, what some of our expectations are and, and where we want to go moving forward. I've had the opportunity to sit down with most of the council members, those that I haven't, and I would like to do that in the next couple of weeks, given the holidays, et cetera. And really just, again, expectations and general ideas and so forth that, that we're looking at as we move forward. One thing we are doing with the DDA board, we are going to be scheduling a retreat possibly before the end of the year. It's, we may go into the first with a 12-month planning horizon relative to some of the action items that we're most concerned about relative to not only Woodland Station, but some of our, our overall objectives in the DDA. So, and I'll be reporting back to council on, on some of those things. And, and we've had some discussions about those already. Also, we had the opportunity to host the, the State of Colorado Blueprint Discussion from the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. That, that was my first opportunity to sit with that group. One of the things that we did discuss is, and something that I'll be bringing forth to the council, be a, a community economic development assessment program. It is run by that office and it, and just very briefly, what it affords us is the opportunity to bring all the resources to bear that the state has, USDA, SBA, to all of our business components in the community. And that is a, one of my primary objectives is to really focus on that element. We are going to be doing a community survey as a part of that process. But as we construct that, I will be working with David and, and counsel and make sure that you fully understand how that process works. Generally, they're on the ground for a whole day here and we do an assessment and it's a line in the sand that basically gives us a component of where businesses are in our community so that we can adequately address particularly financial needs, education, some of the needs of businesses, and then a general overall state of the, the economy as it relates to local business. Finally, we do have a vacancy on the DDA board. I know there's a process, but I, I know there's been some interest and, and we'll process that as, as required. And I think that does, David, come back before city council for recommendations. So be expecting that here in the short term, I would assume, before the end of the year. And again, we, I, I look forward to working with not only the DDA board, but the, the council and the community. I'm, I'm very encouraged and I, again, look forward to the next 12 months. I think we're going to see some exciting things. Already had a number of some very interesting parties that have come to, come into the office or phone calls and some interesting projects I think you're going to see over the course of next year. So again, appreciate the, the opportunity to be here and, and look forward to working with the community in the next 12 months here. Thank you.
Thanks Brian, really good to see you here.
Thanks again.
David, anything else?
No sir, that's it.
Okay. Hearing nothing else?
David before. A good friend of ours and...
David, before, a good friend of ours and, or most of us, Tony Perry's going in for surgery tomorrow. So, you know, you might keep him in mind in your prayers tonight.
Appreciate that. We'll keep Tony in, in our thoughts and prayers tomorrow. Tony's a good member of the community, so. Hearing nothing else? Meeting adjourned.